The meeting of the policy board should welcome you and we stand for the pledge. I pledge to the citizens of America and to the rule of law for gracious events. Okay, and I have a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll motion to adopt the agenda.
All right. Yeah, I have a motion and second, all in favor.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, public comment, I have.
I know, I know, I'm gonna need to say, but.
We'll see.
You have to. I've heard it, you don't.
Yes, that's right. I just forget about it, so I wouldn't lose it again. While the board welcomes public input, we ask that you model the behavior that we hope to see in our students. We encourage speakers to consider their words carefully and reiterate personal directed discriminatory abusive or obscene language or complaints regarding an individual staff member or student. The board president may interrupt and or terminate an individual statement if the allotted time three minutes has expired or if the student privacy is violated. Public comment period is not a time for dialogue between the board and the public. To align with the open public meeting acts, the board will not respond to statements, questions, or challenges made during public comment period. And there will be no back and forth dialogue. Please note that the board's silence is neutral and signifies they are listening thoughtfully.
Okay, one of the core beliefs of the Quincy School District is the following quote. It is our collective responsibility to create an environment where all students are safe, seen, heard, celebrated, and culturally accepted. I urge the school board to keep this collective responsibility in mind while considering the board president's proposal to exclude transgender student athletes from participating in sports. How can exclusion of certain students foster an environment where all students are safe, seen, heard, celebrated, and culturally accepted? As a school board, one part of your role and responsibility is specifically to not press a narrow personal agenda. That is what this proposal seems like, a narrow personal agenda. I'm unaware of any current issues in the Quincy Schools regarding transgender students participating in athletics. While there was some controversy at the Olympics this summer, that was fueled by hatred and misinformation. Is that what this board wants to do too? Spread hate? Give the message to students that how you appear on the outside is much more important than who you are as a person? Whether transgender or perceived transgender, do we really want to send a message to students that the adults in this district are ready to attack them for their personal identity? According to the Trevor Project, an organization which seeks to end suicide in LGBTQIA young people, LGBTQIA youth are four times more likely to die by suicide than their peers. Further, the Trevor Project states that these youth suicides are not due to gender identity or sexual orientation, but rather how these young people are mistreated and stigmatized by society. Is the Quincy School District going to join in stigmatizing and mistreating transgender students? I urge the board to take this matter seriously and not to rush to any decision that would put students at risk for targeted attacks. Please do not put students who are already vulnerable under further scrutiny. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions about the agenda?
Consent.
Second. You said consent.
Yeah, I'm just clarifying.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
No, I have no.
Do I have a motion to consent of the agenda?
I I motion to accept the consent. Adopt the consent.
I'll say.
Okay, we have a motion and seconded. All in favor.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, we have reports. Oh, that's bigger, sorry.
No, you do have a couple of reports.
We do have.
Yep, quick. Then we'll be ready.
Okay.
So, I'm really pleased to announce I put this, I mentioned this last time, our last move, thanking our sponsors for Bike2Go. But we launched officially Bike2Go on on the 10th of September and we have 256 weekend rules going out. So that officially kicked off with ALE Mountain Community Union Pioneer George, so yeah, just that one sponsor we made to cover monument and it's about $10,800 per school. So I'm now looking for a few more interested corporate sponsors to cover our last remaining elementary school. I'm just very thankful that it's on off without a hitch, so it's a great program. Property officially closed last Friday, this downtown, or not, excuse me, uptown support services is no longer our property, we're very thankful for that, so we have one main property to sell and that's our district office, which is still on the market. So if you know anybody interested in this, create office space, daycare, whatever you want it to be. We love to sell. Great trip to Seattle, I want to thank Sina who's not here and Wally for coming to Seattle and using their voice to talk about post-secondary opportunities and supports that they feel that has helped them. And the roundtable right now is really talking about what are some of those things that districts are doing to really support students onto that next post-secondary step, whether it's college, a trade school, a certificate program, but what are we doing collectively as a state to make sure that our students are taking that courageous next step in their in their lives? And it is scary and there's a lot of support needed. So your voice was just really appreciated, Wally, they spoke up a couple of times and she was featured in the video, make sure the board has access to that as well. It was great, so.
Thank you.
WASDA conference, so WASDA conference, the first night, the first day, the general assembly starts about two o'clock. And there's pre-conference sessions, there's a law session, board member boot camp, so the one day board member will go to that strategic advisory, those are the three the three pre-conferences that start that morning at nine o'clock. I'm wondering if there's the board, maybe the board members are interested in attending the pre-conference sessions or would they just, or do you guys would prefer just start going to the general assembly? That starts at two o'clock.
What's the law one? Are we going up to date before?
Uh, we're going up, I believe, the day before. So, but if the board would prefer the evening, but if you don't want to attend any of those pre-conferences, we just cancel your room and then you come at the two o'clock, the general assembly open, so you want to go to the.
I'd mind going if.
Okay.
It's kind of the night.
Yeah, yeah, so I've seen the law, it's just kind of a general landscape of educational law right now, it's really interesting, they bring national attorneys. Strategic advocacy, I think that falls in the legislative rep side of the house. So Shannon, that might be something you'd be interested in.
I'm trying to get.
So Delma will be reaching out to you to know what pre-conference to register you in.
Okay.
And then students, you don't have to go into preconferences if educational law doesn't sound super challenging to you or strategic advocacy. If you want to go, you're more than welcome to attend the preconferences, but we can bring you up that day, so you wouldn't it'd be one less time, one less night away from home. And we're having Carla bring you guys up again, yes.
It does include the board bootcamp, so it's three options.
Correct, yeah, yeah. If you want to. She did online though.
That's true.
But you can go in person too if you like. So I guess my ask is email Delma or I'll let her email you and then respond to what pre-conference you'd like to attend. Sound good?
Yeah.
Um, and then board interview day, if we go over our calendars and look for some dates that would work to interview our future board member. Maybe that first week of October or second week of October.
October 1st?
Sure.
That was on there, I know.
That worked?
I'm not here.
Three? Well, no, we already made it.
That's it.
Yeah. Can I? For Chad, I'm gonna let Chad.
I am, I am here today.
We have a meeting that day already.
Mm-hmm, I know, it's a long day.
The 3rd, the 10th? How much, Tuesday?
The only other thing that we could do today is we could clear the deck of any reports or or work sessions and do just the interview for this, adjust our calendar.
That works, no, we don't need an extra meeting, is that everything?
I'm okay with.
Yeah.
Does that work for everybody?
I guess it depends, but what are we canceling from?
Uh, it's a, it's a data work session, but we can move that to the following. The following, I can shuffle some things around.
Line is not haywire and everything, all of it.
Yeah.
I don't think it is, Annalise is not here, so I don't, I don't think it is, but we can, we can move some things around. Yeah.
Right.
Well, same for that.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, that is, oh, and then I guess P. Suzie Marosa is coming to Middle School for Community Night on the 3rd of October at 6:00 p.m. I highly recommend for the board to attend, it's a really informational opportunity to hear how to survive an active shooting and it's applicable not just to a school setting, it really is tips that would help anyone, whether it's a we had churches attend, you know, we have to have employees who were at the Live Nation when the shooting occurred and they reported back to me that they were running, what people like to do in that situation.
The one on the second?
It's the third.
The third.
That one, perfect.
And that is the student assembly, if you'd like to attend the student assembly, you can too, that's the second.
Eight forty.
Yeah, sorry, eight forty.
We have three different student assemblies, two at the high school on Wednesday morning, the one in the afternoon at the middle school, and then it's the last one at the middle school is on Thursday morning. So, um, parents are going to be coming to the evening presentation.
And if you can't come in the evening, you're more than welcome to come to the student service as well.
And that's there.
Second, and there's a second. Two different options. If you want to come. The parents' speaker session. At the old, we take that, parenting is at 3:00 to 6:00 p.m.
What time is that?
Six to seven thirty.
And I will make sure that the board has an outlook in place for the evening event. And if we have more than three board members, we'll probably notice, so just let me know if you're going to attend, I'll just put a notice out on our website. We'll be meeting, but just a gap for the board.
Five.
Six. That is all I have.
Student representatives.
We have a little more fun stuff, per usual. Um, Hope Community is coming up, our thing that you was tangled up at Home Community. Amazing. We have a kickoff event next Wednesday.
So Tingle liked the movie, right?
Tangled, yes, the movie, yeah.
Sure.
We're also doing a co-ed volleyball, last year it was success, last year it was joy. Um, we also are now doing the thing, it's called spirit, spirit activity every day during lunch shift, which is just kind talk to different people in the lunch, and just do different activities. Um, of course, we, we can have the prep, our prep assemblies, our rallies, our halftime shows. Um, we are also had National Guard visit today, as well as U-Dub visitors to kind of get everyone thinking about post-secondary options. Uh, for Spotty Heritage Month, ninth grade added classes, they are working on a project where each class, which is in a different country and different culture that's from that country, and we're going to build up on the school, on the board, just to celebrate Spotty Heritage Month. Um, anything else?
We voted for seniors.
Oh, yeah.
I didn't care at the time.
Oh, I think it's on September 30th, we're gonna have photos for senior.
Oh.
So seniors are getting their ID cards sent to A and B.
I have to. You haven't turned that, sent it now.
Okay, thank you. Board leadership report?
Do you think more leadership, or Shannon, you want to talk about the general assembly?
General assembly, we lived out in seven hours.
Oh.
Bit of, let's see, it started, we started at nine on Friday and they thought they would, should roll over into Saturday and we actually were finished at four o'clock on Friday afternoon, so that was great. Um, it was very calm and peaceful negotiating, people gave their pros and cons on what they felt pushing about and I pushed my button on what we had visited about, it was great, it was good. All of them, uh, they are definitely, uh, everybody is in agreement on NFOC, that's for sure, that was like almost like a 98% pass on NFOC, so.
Really appreciate it.
That was a really big push.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, do we want to go over this policy review option?
The second, six point two, first is just the first reading, the second, that isn't actually, yeah.
So, do we need to read it, or do we just go through?
If you can, or you can accept a motion to to pass, are we the ones to do that? Are there any questions?
I did have. The one I didn't write down, um, these policy, uh, a need for a new or a revised policy. We've never done anything like this so far.
Um, there was some new policies that have come from the federal or state, so this really just.
But I mean, this isn't for the us, this is just for.
It can't be, it can be the state or federal government initiate a need for a policy, it can be the board, staff, administration, community can initiate or start the need for a policy, and then WASDA or our legal counsel can identify a need for a policy.
And am I to understand any policy we do want to change, we want to have the parents involved as well as the administration personnel and.
Over, depending on the policy, and what we do when we bring the policy forward, we work with everybody that's impacted internally and how that policy or procedure might impact them as well.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
That's all I have, I have no objections to any of that.
Sure, no, it's a great question.
For procedures, so there's some sections that are blank or like, they're still going to be finished. Um, either way, we don't vote on procedures, is that correct?
That's correct, because that's operational side.
So will we be waiting until we see how you're operating? Before we vote on?
It's, it's, it's just for your review, Dana, for that, we can bring that back to the board for sure. You can adopt the policy and we can bring that back for you to review. Yeah, absolutely.
How it's exercised.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's a blank in there, yes, we'll make sure that that is, that is brought back, yeah.
Well, and WASDA has a multiple copies.
Correct.
That we can go over.
And these are.
This is not the model policy that WASDA is recommending.
It is. Yes, these are all of WASDA's model policies. Where at, what page are you on, Dana?
Which one, oh, I'm looking at procedure number 4130P.
Oh, for first reading?
Yeah.
Yeah, we will make sure that that's corrected for you.
Well, it just says like describe how, so there's just sections that are still uh, being filled out, but then also something that did stand out to me was that each school district will have its own family engagement policy. Are there any standards that will at least keep the district unified? And then I like that idea of customizing for building, but.
That's a really good question, so Victoria, she overs the title line, she specifically oversees the parent engagement piece, I'll let Victoria speak to that, that's a great question.
You're right, there's a district policy and procedure, and then there is, each building is required to have a building policy and they all use the same template, so they have the same. Right, so, you know, happy to share more about that with that answer.
Yes, yeah. The procedure, it is regularly re-titled on, it has certain components that require a building level and administrative.
Yeah, and that, that was a miss, so thank you for catching that, and we will, we'll make sure that before this comes out of this thing, that that's described.
So the only big change I see like on the, the regular board policy number 40, that is mainly just adding part A.
Correct.
So the federal law changed, so to.
Yes.
To break out and create a part A.
Correct.
In this one?
Yep.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Which is specific to parent communication.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
For example, Diana, Title One Part C is my right. Well, part A is a very specific.
So broke that part out to be really specific around parent engagement, so it was, wasn't just part of lumped into Title One in general, just pulled out?
So, I'm, I should have done this before this being our father, so like, if, if the public's trying to search up our policies, everything related to Title One, Part ABC, whatever, it will all be under 4130, or 31, you know, like the number sequencing, are they all like plumped together?
The title, they, they, it depends on what part of title it is, if it's specifically related to students, it'd be under 3,000, if it's under, it all depends.
Okay. Uh, I know something that we have talked about, I want to say a month or two ago, was related to like board education and like these specific policies, I know I would appreciate just learning more of what Title Nine is, I didn't realize there was parts to it. Uh, it's in fact, it seems like a lot more, uh, other policies, so I would be interested in more education.
Okay.
And the only other thing I saw was that it listed you as a Title Nine coordinator, but I thought that would be.
DJ is a Title, and now I have a coordinator, and that just switched, so we'll, we'll make that switch.
Okay.
Yep. So then with that, would you like that prior to bringing this into a second reading, would you like, like, kind of a Title Nine report?
That'd be great.
Okay.
Like high level.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sure.
How it affects the industry, we kind of did that in leadership, I think that's fair.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, we'll add that to our, it wouldn't be our October eighth meeting, but it'll be after that, that gives us a little bit of time. And we'll just reserve this policy then for the second October meeting, too, we'll clear these out. Okay, thanks.
Hey. So, we don't have any unfinished business, we.
This is six point two. That was, we're talking about six point.
Oh, just.
We got the actions to.
I make a motion.
On second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay. I can adjourn the meeting for.
Uh, we're doing a work session.
But we are, but is that?
People, they don't have to scram for it, but we adjourn after the session.
Okay.
Yep, yep.
So we will have a work session, if you want to stay, if you have a free. Yeah.
Yes.
Be weird if you had missed school, like the government, but I think I'm here.
Freaking, I'm sorry.
No, sorry, I'm sorry. We're just working stuff. Oh, so many people at the table.
It isn't, it's just a party.
Yes. Oh, go ahead.
Your chats tickle your ears.
Okay.
Jay want to give us all?
Yeah.
Okay. So we're going to be speaking about dress code and really try to get some information out to understand the current district policy and a little bit of the history behind it, how, how we landed here, learn how schools are currently addressing dress code, uh, and hear about French, and really get the duration, or I think that we have to some maybe challenges that we have to go through of our current practice. And so, this team has gotten together, we kind of had a subcommittee, uh, and we've met four times in order to prepare, and really just trying to get the conversation started. We want to highlight first and foremost the incredible work that they've done in order to not only this presentation, but trying to keep this in a lower address, which is really difficult, is to become the talking points for parents, right, in the meeting and this app and features, and so it's it's work that we have to do, but it's, uh, we found in getting everybody together is we're more aligned than we are different, so I want to applaud each and every one of you for doing that work. You can go ahead and put next, and you can see where that is.
In here, actually.
So in the, okay.
How a urine.
Let's do the dress code.
Spend a couple of years, we'll let them run it.
So, highlighted dress code policy, we've added the procedure, you have a hard copy in front, but if you want to go back, you can go back to this agenda and, and review it.
Yes.
And then again, I want to just reiterate the work session target, we really want to understand current district policy and the history. Uh, it has changed quite a few times. I was wondering how schools are currently addressing, uh, dress code and how we respond. And then hear about the strength and consideration of, of our practices. So with that, we're going to start with the history and past practice and how we got here. Uh, there is a lot of bullets here, but we'll be more conversational, and I'm going to kick it off to Felicia and Scott.
Yeah, I mean, I think Scott's been here only a little bit longer. Um, uh, when I came seven years ago, uh, there was a more restrictive policy and we had a long specific list that, um, you know, which Scott and I talked, were even sometimes different across our buildings, what were the things that were on the list. Um, what we've noticed, um, observations I've made is we have, um, you know, front office staff putting hands on the kids' bodies to measure straps and place duct tape on cool jeans and um, also an issue with those long lists is those items change and they become obsolete pretty quickly and replaced with new trends. Um, and so this would limit our ability to intervene because pushback from kids, their parents, they're like, well, that wasn't on the list, which is not on the list, and I should be able to wear that. And the trends would emerge in, you know, the middle of the school year after we had done our review. Um, secondary reframed our language to align with our PDIS practices, which we were really trying to grow at that time, and moved trying to state the rules in more of a positive. Um, another issue we noticed is there was a lot of evidence in both the language in our procedures and also our referrals that dress code was impacting our female students to a greater degree than our male students.
Women, that the obvious women were a large variety of things. It isn't that way for men, so that would be expected, right?
Potentially, yeah, yeah. Um, and then in talking with our elementary colleagues, they talked about how the dress code had been redone in 2018, so previous to me, the high school principals had led a realignment of the dress code um, at secondary and elementary followed suit. Um, and an update hasn't been done, um, at elementary, um, and Alicia has shared that there hasn't been a lot of issues that have resurfaced with our dress code, so we haven't really even just touched it since then because we haven't had problems with it, you know, so we just, I didn't realize, you know, all the different changes that, um, secondary, I thought we were pretty aligned, and when we looked in, we're like, okay, we're pretty similar, but the little bit of differences, um, but overall, we were pretty aligned. And we continue to have staff members, even after those changes, express that they felt uncomfortable intervening with students and named a wide variety of reasons, so everything from I don't want to be accused of being inappropriate, um, I don't know how to, um, talk about this with kids, all the way to the other. All the way to the other end of the spectrum. I don't really notice this as an issue. It's not something that. I care about and I really just want to focus on teaching in the classroom and this interferes, feels like it interferes with my. Relationships with my students. Uh, and so Scott can share his own perspective. I definitely heard from my staff that. There was a real lack of consensus among everyone around what to enforce and how to intervene. So that led to us doing an exercise with the teachers. Where they had an opportunity to weigh in on that twenty eighteen draft. And give further input on what they felt like we could all agree to get on same page with about. What do we intervene as a staff so that kids are experiencing consistency? Cause one of the big issues was, you know, student would make it all the way to like fifth period. And then the fifth period teacher, because they're dialed in to a specific issue. Is having a conversation with that student and then the pushback is. Why do you, why are you picking on me about this? Like, no one has said anything to me about this. This is really unfair. Um, so um, it just was not, we weren't getting the consistency, which for. Reinforcement of decision-making and behavior is super important. So. Um, in twenty twenty-two, the assistant principals facilitated this teacher-wide discussion about the inconsistencies. And so they co-constructed what our current dress code is in order to reach that agreement. So. Uh, that's where I think just being really upfront and transparent, like ours has less language than. Scott's and so that you guys know kind of how that change got made, so.
I think, well, I think I would add to that, which is that um, there's been a lot of discussion about the dress affecting. Education. Okay, if I'm wearing this shirt, is it really impacting my ability to wear or? That it's um, education going on in the classroom. And so that was the other.
Yeah, and I think our focus. Altogether has really been around that safety piece. Um, we have done a lot of work and there's a lot of. Energy around making sure that we are educating everybody about the trends related to gang affiliation and. Um, and we see more referrals coming in about that. And then we do see around like length of a shirt or width of a strap. It's that focus on safety and is it, is it disrupting the learning environment? And if we have students who are expressing. Uh, getting associated tendencies, then that is a huge factor still.
Did you do an exercise as well with the teachers of Coca-Strudt?
We did a couple of years ago, very similar, had this, have some discussions about where things were worded and and. You know, what's acceptable, what's not acceptable.
So what's your approach when you go tell a child, you need to read a little bit from the class privately?
We have.
Yeah.
Yeah, we had the, yeah.
Yeah, and it's a, it's a, you know, it takes a village. So um, we talked with the staff about. How to approach kids and um, there's a lot of feelings of shame that can come for kids, um, especially if we're talking about. Um, clothing that is considered more revealing. So. We are asking that those conversations are happening very quietly. Um. And then oftentimes they are making it down to our office and we're having a conversation with that student. Um, and and we get, you know, a range of responses that's like, okay, you have a problem to like. My mom's gonna be so mad that you're asking me to change this, but we really try to keep the kids in the classroom. So our staff do a great job of, hey, can you turn that shirt inside out? Step into the restroom and turn that shirt inside out. Can you put your sweatshirt on? Um, can you turn that belt inside out? Stuff that's easy to adjust in the moment that doesn't involve. Removing that student, excluding them from their learning in order to come down to the office and have a discuss. And it, we can talk about it. There's some layers of, you know, if the first time doesn't work, what happens next? Um, so we have kind of that progressive response, but at the end of the day, um, we really try to be really humane. With the kids and protect their dignity whenever possible, whether it is an issue of a gang-related thing or. Uh, a modesty issue.
Yeah, I have biggest problem just modesty because we're trying to get them ready for their future. Not a single one is going to get an interview with some of the outfits that you do see. And I think they just need to think about that. So if we schedule the rules. Not a spaghetti strap. Uh, that's for outdoor playing in the summertime, that's for prime time maybe, but not sit in your classroom. Not to go to your job interview, not to go to church, whatever. Um. I don't think we have to be more specific than that. Of course, we don't want holes or. Buns or brats hanging out. We want it kept covered. That's to be expected by everybody. Um. But handle it. I see that as a problem. I can understand a man not exactly wanting to go to a little pay, which you put on. Um, that's very embarrassing to him as well. But unless we do it. We're never gonna take care of the problem.
I can say as an adult that has to tell other adults uniform policy, it never.
No.
And if you're telling kids that, it's.
Yeah.
I guess the standards department of the airline, we made it our point that the. The all the instructors do not correct, except for the chief house office, the principal's office. But we know, but it's the exact same conversation you guys are having. Well, no one else ever said anything to me before. Well, I'm. Welcome to the discussion, but I'm here, so.
Yeah.
So here's another guidelines and the responsibilities and that way we can kind of go through and show. The kind of similarities between policy procedures and then some of the expectations of what exactly we're talking about. We want to continue down that.
So Q and S and QIA procedures are aligned. Um. So our guideline states are preserving a beneficial learning environment and assuring the safety and well-being of all students. Our primary concerns of the school district and staff. Quincy High School students are expected to come to school in attire that demonstrates that they are ready, responsible and respectful. And then we know that there are kind of shared responsibilities in this. Parents have the responsibility for seeing that their students are appropriately dressed for school. Um, as such, student choices in matters of dress should be made in consultation with their parents and be consistent with the. Quincy way of ready, responsible and respectful. And school personnel have the responsibility in maintaining and enforcing an appropriate dress code that is conducive to learning. School administration is the final authority in determining the appropriate dress. Now, that's where those conversations do often end up.
I agree. Parents do have the responsibility, but a lot of these homes, especially during. Uh, picking or harvesting and what have you, they're gone long before their children. So they have no idea that their kid had on. And kids are going to choose a little differently if. They're not being watched. Not all kids, but most kids will. They've got a favorite. My big thing was they have to wear saddle shoes and I want to wear my church shoes. So I snuck them out, mommy, that was the stuff. Saw that I had them on, cause I changed immediately. Well. It's surprising. Yeah, yeah.
The mermaids still make the running, the flip flops still make money.
The sweaters.
The heels, the heels.
Yes.
Yeah, there is a heel.
Totally. Um, and then expectations, um, this is the language that would rise by our staff. So be ready, wear clothing that's suitable for all classroom activities. And we support our teachers who um, very specific environments definitely require more coverage to do to safety and. Kids understand that and like our, like, an example would be a current kind of. New development happening in PE is we have some choices being made that we think. Spanks are outerwear and that is not appropriate. So, yeah, and um. Shorts are very short and so some little bums are hanging out. Um, so you know, I was in the locker room with Kelly and she's posting signage and going over this with the students about. Um, you know, for PE, even though you're dressing down. We need to be wearing actual shorts and shorts that cover us. So. Um, those are examples, um, and like Mike's welding class, right? They need to have the coveralls and. Or like a, a health class where they're doing CPR and you're gonna be leaning over a dummy, like we need to be covered appropriately, so. Um, and, and so that is an example, I think, of, you know, these contextualized situations. Um, and, and the teachers do a great job of providing that specific instruction and guidance to kids. And then when there are issues. They are reporting that and we have a process for how admin responds to that. So. Um, obviously to wear appropriate footwear, being responsible means wearing clothing and accessories that are completely free from advertising, displays or suggestions of drugs. Alcohol, sex, profanity, discrimination or violence, and wearing clothing that is free of gang associations. This is definitely the area where we see the most um, like change happening constantly, constantly adjusting. And so we have to be pretty on the ball. Um, there's an upcoming. Gang training happening at the ESD that one of our assistant principals is going to be attending. So she'll come back with the updated information about what are the regional. Police officers seeing and so that we can take that back up to the staff.
It'd be six months.
See, do we have to wait for that? Why can't we just go to our local? I wait for you.
That like it's slightly different, kind of in different areas and then we'll see those trends kind of like move in and out, so.
I made it to the training last year and so it's by county, so they can get a snapshot of every group of whole county and so you've got the envelope from. From Moses Lake and the Tri-Cities. So it's a really good training that kind of gets a more broad idea of the kids that are coming in to Quincy as well.
We also find that some things that are considered gang-related be um attire in rural city might not be the same as most slay. It's safe here. So we might, you know, say you can't wear that. And it's okay there. It doesn't signify. So. Those things can get very.
Yeah.
And then if you get a large influx of students that move from. Rural City or somewhere, then then you get a problem. So it's, it's really good information to get from the ESD to be like, oh, hey. You know, I'm starting to see this and this is what I was told when I come here.
Do you know where you do this?
Yeah. I was gonna say, with all the change and having beauty, how do you make the judgment call?
We do a lot of um, like collaborating, like we were just thought partnering around, we kind of, we see a, a. Recent concern around shirts that aren't shirts. Um, and so Christine and I are in talking about. Like while that is sort of covering areas, but it looks more like a piece of lingerie. So like, okay, how are we gonna? How are we gonna um? Describe that in a helpful way? How are we gonna communicate that out to staff and students? And then how are we gonna intervene? Uh, so it just is something that we are out in the hallways, we're seeing, teachers are sharing, um, and classified staff are sharing, hey, I'm noticing this. Um, a lot of times it's just like, oh, I pulled a kid down to talk about a separate issue and I noticed that. He's wearing this belt that we know is um, a gang-affiliated attire or I'm noticing this young lady. Um, has, you know, the shirt is like cut all the way up to here, like we're gonna mention that and intervene around that.
Yeah, actually it's really helpful with the way that list is up three.
Yeah.
But because then you could, we have that ability to adjust on fly.
Well, we identified cookies as a brand that kids can't wear. But now we've seen an uptick in Backwoods, which is also a brand that's a marijuana brand. Well, drug brands. And so they, they know they can't wear cookies. So now they're wearing Backwoods. And so now we need to talk about Backwoods. So they'll just shift. Oh, we can't wear cookies, now we're backwards. And so you can't only identify that these.
And that shift happens fast. It's not like that. You get a text like, okay, well, we're wearing this now. All of a sudden they just, this brain starts popping up.
The white socks thing, the white socks.
And then we start doing our research.
Yeah.
What is that? What is that?
Like white socks, when, when that popped up, we were meeting with, uh, we meet most of us with Q Q B. And then we said, hey, we're noticing that, yep, that you don't say that. And then we shared that out.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and then, you know, I, I really brought a really good point about making sure that our kids are just for success, that they know how to go in and get a job. And that's one thing. I'll give, you know, Quincy High School a lot of credit for, especially with our CTE programs with DECA at BLA. Um, at, at Ag, it's, it's pretty amazing, FFA and all of our, all, all of our CTSO clubs. They do a really good job of emphasizing those job-ready skills and job-ready dress too. So we have. Almost seventy percent of our kids in a, in a CTE class or a CTSO, um, that's something of course too. It's great.
Consequences.
Consequences. Before we move on, so like, I feel like even though you use less words, I'm still not sure how it's going. This year, because everything's changing. You're trying to stay current.
It's not.
It's not.
But it just, like, for example, like, how are you defining private areas? Cause you just said a shirt that's just cut up to the midriff. So is the midriff now considered a private area? How are you making those?
I think that it's, it, this is where, especially in along that vein of modesty, it gets really murky. Um, and what one person considers perfectly fine for their child to be wearing to school. Another person can say that's, that's, I wouldn't let my kid be caught dead in that. Um, and so it is, that I would say is a challenge. Um, by.
But you as a school don't have a right to say, we want midriffs covered.
I mean, we do have that right.
It goes back to, is it disrupting education?
Exactly. Is it what?
Is it disrupting education?
It certainly can, come on.
I see for those students myself that, um, in my opinion, it's not a problem, but believe what is not distracting me from reading my chapter book. It's. It's a lot going back to like. It's just. Strange in that. How she said like now, what, what do you, what do you consider fully covered?
I feel like you.
It's a felony that doesn't bother you.
I feel like it does bother a man.
I think it's muddy, not a man.
That would be the man's issue.
That would be the man's issue, yeah.
I think if that conversation would come up, why are you gonna target at me? That's the man. Again, we're all here for the role of what we do.
I see what you're saying.
Kind of like. You may not want to me, maybe it's somebody else. Then again, it's modesty, the rule, or is it, cause I still mentioned earlier, we were having this discussion that. It's not a Christian school, it's private, I mean, it's public, and modesty is up to everyone's.
Own field.
So again, my parent, well, that's okay. Another parent, I want to. But it can be all wrong with different views and that's where that can also come in.
Great. Yeah, but you brought the example of the midriff showing. So that, so does a school have to find what a private area is? Do you have to find what a gang association is? Do they have to be recognized in intentional data base of some kind? We're, no, we're pretty clear on the numbers and that we have a slide coming up where we, we identify the numbers and, and, and. Um, bandanas and specific, like hanging belts and stuff like that. So we have. Uh, things specific that we don't allow as far as kind of gang-related dress goes. Um, so it was not, every, we're very clear.
One of the schools, they even banned. Certain hairdos because they would shave in the numbers or the letters and I thought, wow. Okay, I never thought about those kind of things. So then I would just say, wankering and playing, no gang-related.
Well, and it does have that, that is, that's exactly what happened. And then they, they are specific about those things.
But Diana, I'm sure you get your question answered. I, so I'm. Can you kind of rephrase where you're at?
I guess where I'm stuck is I'm like, it seems like the arbiters, so whether it be the teacher or school staff. Have more freedom to make whatever judgment call that they want versus. The previous one was self-prescribed, so then you actually could pinpoint, but now it just seems like, oh, it bothers me. I don't think that's respectful. So now I'm attacking you, which I'm like, isn't that worse? I, I don't know.
Kind of the opposite way in that um, we have a leniency to um. To lean into that conversation with a parent and a student when there's something that's, we're starting to wonder about and ask about, but.
But I think the opposite of people using it to be like, well, it bothers me. So it needs to be a problem. I think it's the opposite that people have been more. Um, laid back about bringing a concern. Um, if it doesn't impact safety. Or that disruption to learning environment, I feel like my staffer much less likely to bring it to my, bring it to my attention. And I, uh, you know, Q I A, what we did, cause we had, we had some discussion about this as a staff last year. And at that time, we had elementary, middle school and high school students. So we kind of looked at all of the policies and the staff had some discussion about this and looked at our district policy about, you know, we will intervene. When it's a health or safety hazard, when it damages to full property can result, or whether there's a material and substantial disruption of the educational process. And all of our principals and schools, we've, we've had these discussions and pieces with staff and. Come to this place where we're at now, whether or not we need to be other places, um, following that policy, right? So looking at that with the staff and, and looking at what was impacting us, we, uh, looked at what Q I, Q H S had done. Q M S and, um, and the elementary schools. And we, we thought all of these make sense to us. Uh, but we have kids at all those levels. So we went with who we had more of, and we had more students at high school level than we did at any other level. And so that's why we, uh, adopted the same policy. Um, and, uh. That more specific list that we used to have, um, was almost more limiting. If that makes any sense. I know, I, I see what you're saying, but in my experience is what I'm trying to share. It's, that list was actually more limiting because people would say. Um, you know, well, it doesn't say that I can't wear, um. You know, an example would be a piece of clothing that's so tight that it's starting to rip open on a student. Well, it doesn't say anything about clothes being tight on here. Then it must be okay. So that, that, I got a lot more pushback when there was a specific list than I do. Um, having these conversations with people now and tying into these. P D I S positive responsibilities about trying to show the positive, we're trying to be respectful, we're trying to be prepared. So just show that perspective.
And I think the other piece to that midriff, it wasn't just the cut up, it was actually laced like lingerie. And that was a flag, like that looks like lingerie and that's when they came together.
And we are just, you know, it's that we have to calibrate and talk, like it isn't just me and like a little office deciding. Like I, I serve a public entity. This isn't about me. Injecting my own agenda. It's about what do we all agree on is safe and appropriate? And then using our language to intervene in a place of mutual respect. Um, to help kids understand it's a learning opportunity too, um, for, for kids. And I think that, that one of the issues that we've seen in kind of the old model was. Even as specific as the language was, there were all of these differences in like. What the kids were able to go buy in the store and then what it actually looked like on them depending on their body type. Their height, um, you know, and so we're talking about, well, the shorts have to go to mid thigh. Well, mid thigh. For me, I don't have one. There's just these, you know, versus a kid who's tall. Um, it's the same shorts and they're like way beyond the, the limitations of the dress code. And yet everything is covered. So is, you know, is this how we're spending our time? And oftentimes. I think those conversations coming back to this idea of like, we want to keep the focus on, on the. Safety and the sanctity of the learning environment when we're constantly pulling kids out of their learning opportunity. In order to talk about tops and shorts, like that starts to unfairly impact a certain subgroup protected class of kids.
Well, yeah, I wanted to say something.
Um, yeah, I kind of like to collect the gang affiliated clothing. Cause there's a. Example that some students mentioned where that clothing can be trendy, you have gang affiliated members. So because I am wearing number thirteen on this really cool Boston jacket I have, does that make me a gang member? Again, with the belts. There's some cultural things that those belts are known for. They're not all gang affiliated. A lot of people prefer loser clothing because it makes them feel more comfortable. Is that considered gang affiliated? So it's kind of that like line of, are you, are you gang affiliated or you're not?
There's conversations that happen with those students when we actually, when we see or notice. They bring them in to have those conversations to ask.
And then I said it again as well. When we address that also, it's not like you are a gang member. It is. You know, some of these clothes represent and are identified by gangs by, so by wearing some of those things. Um, others may see that way. And so it, I'm not trying to pin you into X gang, you know? I'm saying that could be viewed by others this way.
And then to say.
For that student, but all others around. So that's gonna point you on, like I bought my daughter a Alex Morgan jersey without thinking about it. And she's number thirteen. So she could have went to school, but she'd be wearing, you know.
Hmm. Well, I, I think specifically to like gang affiliation or just fingers in general, like I think again, where is that information coming from? Uh, as a student who was misidentified as a possible game member, which is absurd, um. It was just what I could afford. I had no idea. But yeah, even the school pulling you out is a judgment call that actually. Puts a label on you that, oh, is this what people think of you? So even though you think you're actually creating safety, you didn't. So it's just. I, I think how it's termed, where are you getting your information? Uh, uh.
Yeah, it's fair to the students to, to have it.
Yeah, I can agree with the idea. And I was, what, twelve years old, being considered, uh, gang affiliated, having a conversation as a twelve year old is like. Why not? It's my kind of people forward. And so is this me coming to school and my education gonna frame me as a. Possible game, game, gang association? Um, that's also one thing that, that I mentioned, a lot of students have different circumstances. A lot of them is, they don't close from older setting. What makes me, and I may look like a game affiliation, but this is what I have. And so I think that's what you have to keep in mind when it comes to that.
Or what, like, that one sibling and then the hand me downs might not fit the other sibling the exact same way. So that's a hard conversation to have too.
But I think even like your example of like a college mortgage jersey with the number thirteen wouldn't have the same bias as. You having an L A Dodgers number thirteen. So there's just all these crises against culturally, cultural things. That maybe we determine that's just pretty. It just reminds us of home. I'm from California. So you see what I mean? So there's just so many nuances. So. If all these people are making like judgments on it. It, it seems unfortunate and it sounds unfortunate, but in my conversations with students, I always start off by, this is, it, it's not a judgment. And whether they take it that way or not, it's in every conversation. It, it is about the safety of the student and those around them. Because I don't want other people to think that they are game related or game affiliated. Because it, there could be somebody that is being affiliated and sees them as not part of their game and then that puts them in danger. So that's always my conversation with them. Do you find that most students are receptive to that?
Most are, yes. Um, some aren't and some get defensive and that's gonna happen. But if we do away with these, you know, all of them, say, okay, wear what you want, that makes our school very unsafe. And so, you know, we have, we don't just come with, we don't just sit at night and say, oh, I think I'm gonna add this to the list. These. This list comes from the Quincy Police Department and the E S D and, you know, the county.
Isn't an arbitrary list. But I think, you know, it's also like, there's judgment call too.
Yeah.
You know, when I was elementary principal, I would have this kid who was so proud that he got this, you know, Rangers. You know, jersey and it was thirteen, he's wearing it to school, you know, I might get a call this student out. Or it's me just got for Christmas, no gang affiliation. But it was a conversation later with him. In his family, just about kind of the civic aspect of it.
My own kids got called out of school because we were all Seahawk fans. And I have eight children. And they were all wearing Seahawk jerseys to school all the time. And so suddenly they were a Seahawk gang.
Because they'll be having.
They were asked. They were instructed not to wear Seahawk jerseys to school anymore. And I was just like, this is ridiculous. But, you know, you do what you have to do. So I mean. And to me, it was ridiculous, but I was like, okay, whatever, you know, but, um, you know, it's.
And I think what I, what I hear in your comments and your questions though too, goes back to this need. To handle this delicately, sensitively, culturally responsive. And be really informed and thoughtful about our approach and how it's being implemented. Um, cause it is, would never be any of our wishes to make anybody feel targeted. To anybody feel like labeled or put in a category, um, that someone's just decided this about you. So I, I just, I appreciate you sharing that perspective because I think it's an important one for us to keep in mind. So it's, it's a tough situation.
Do you wanna move so long to get through the consequences? We have eighteen slides and we're seven ready. Yeah, it is great. But it's, uh, we have, we're the high school Q I A, we have consequences. We're gonna share elementary and Q M S here. So, go ahead.
Um, so the intent with the, the consequences is to really try to eliminate. The need to remove the student out of their learning environment. If the teacher can intervene in the classroom with a simple fix. Then that's what we ask to happen. Um, and if that is not fixing the issue. Or if it's something that we see in our interactions with kids, then it's a, you know, hey, come down, let's talk about this in the office. Um, and we may have to look at, uh, a, a further consequence, like calling parents. Uh, having the kids do some reflection. Uh, when the dress code violation is not deemed. Um, an issue of safety or disruption to the learning environment. The consequences, you know, it doesn't lend itself to progressive discipline. So it's one of the things that we, we don't suspend kids. For dress code violations unless we start to move into like a severe safety concern.
Right?
Yeah.
Few minutes. So a lot of these conversations have been had. And if you look at the, um, policy in front of you. A lot of the wording comes from them, right? So providing a, uh, a learning environment, assuring safety of our students. Um, those all come out of it. And so we also, uh, at Quincy Middle School have the ready respectful responsible. So, um, stating it in a positive way to help kids make proper decisions. That's the goal of doing it that way. So if you look at the next slide for the expectations for being ready, we have again similarities and it's covering hybrid areas. Ours was, um, our teachers had a discussion and, and there was some discussion about. The private areas and how short is too short. And the belly button was kind of what the staff at the time was kind of that limit. So. Um, to try to, whenever you're doing this with adults, you're always trying to find that middle line that is. That most people, that, that most can support. Whether or not I a hundred percent agree with it, that is the middle line that I'll support. And so. As I say, does not expose stomach above the belly button. So, you know, there might be a little bit of minrip, but we wanted to protect that of getting too short. Um, no undergarments, um, under the ready, under the respectful, as hoods are not to be worn inside Quincy Middle School. And we had that main discussion for two reasons. One, um, safety of being able to know who a kid is. Cause this was after COVID and kids were wearing their hoods way down and a mask and we didn't know who they are. But the other thing was hiding earbuds. Cause kids, if you have a hood on, I can't tell what's in your ears. So that was one, um, that we chose to stand on. Uh, and for hat two was follow your teacher's expectations.
Your best.
Your best. Yeah.
I was thinking those earbuds and things. I just had what I heard.
No, no, no. The speaker that's going in here, headphones, virus. Um. And then under being responsible is where we tie in all of our, uh, drugs, no. Displays or suggestions of drugs, alcohol, sex, profanity, discrimination, violence, and also the game apparel there. And as we're talking about those, that gang, yes, we do work with the Q P D. But there are some things, the numbers, unfortunately thirteen, fourteen, eighteen, that are always gonna be associated with a gang. Right? And if you walk around and see it and tagging, those are the things we're seeing. So that's kind of why we take the hard line on those numbers. They understand it creates some situations where it's like, it wasn't the intent, but we gotta be protective of those.
And consequences on the next page from middle school. For similar to what you heard from, um, the high school, you know, our first. Our first line of, of addressing is, the issue is with who teacher in the classroom generally in first period. And if that solves the problem, great. If the kid's able to turn that shirt inside out or correct it, put a sweater on or something, great, they stay there. When it comes to the office, it's the same kind of behavior. We wanna solve the problem, get the kid back in class. And so that is, that is our first intent. And that's what we, we really push for. Yeah, that's un, if they're unable to correct the problem or, or unwilling to, um, then it might be a parent call and say, hey. Bring something else for your child to wear because this is not an appropriate or. Um, does that follow our, our dress code? So, um, we give the parent a chance to bring something else for the kid to wear. When they return to class. Um, the next page, I left our whole game policy in there. Um, number, uh, bullet number one or item number one there really deals with the, the clothing. Aspect of a gang policy that we wanted to make sure you saw. And, um, talks about wearing, possessing or distributing clothing or jewelry or inlones. That would, uh, identify association or membership in a gang and that kind of thing. Um, and, um, so I, I wanted you to see exactly since we had that discussion, what was there. You know, as far as in our policy regarding that portion of it. Um.
How do you find gang style writing?
Lot of times. And it, and generally there's, um, a thirteen, eighteen, fourteen written in. I mean, you're. You're not gonna, if a kid has, you know, it's artistic and they've written some old English and it's their name or it's, you know, you look past those ones that. When they portray maybe a nickname that's not their name, it's worth just asking some questions around. And then if they weave in some. Some.
Just curious.
And so, you know, in all those things, it, it, it starts the conversation, you know, it's kind of thing that you are a gang. It means, hey, this is what we know this represents. You know, why are you wearing, what's going on?
Yeah, I, I can also speak, Dan, I, I want to, you know, you in school and conversations. And as a new student shortly after you graduated, you know, unfortunately that your, your perception is hocus pocus inaccurate. Those conversations were not as gentle. They were not as culturally responsive. They were at a much harder stance that either are you, you aren't. And it was unfortunate. And I'm, you know, I'm really proud to see the evolution of the dress code where it's calmed, where it's handled. You know, it's not always handled perfectly, but I think it generally, it's handled with that cultural responsiveness in my, to really understand. Rather than leaning in with that kind of that accusatory stance. And I, I would say, you know. Fifteen years ago, twenty years ago, that's, that's where we journey started. And I was probably killed through that myself.
Man, um, if you've ever heard, uh, Gus Winter, so he was one of the ones that started doing this in our district. And he will always say, look. I'm gonna give you some things to look for, but it doesn't mean the kid is a gang member, right? It doesn't mean they're involved in the gang. It's a place to start that conversation. So if you start to see one or two or three of these, that's a lot of times the first, first thing. We'll ask a teacher, the teacher says, hey, I'm concerned about this. Great, have you talked about the kid? Because that's how you're gonna start to find out is those conversations.
Let's say they are in a game, what do you do?
Well, um, if they are, so we, we lead on our counselors a lot. Um, we let them know that, that it is a danger and there is safety concerns. Uh, um. Many times there's gonna be family involved. So it's a family line. And it's just helping that kid to try to make a safe decision that if. We need you to make a safe decision here at school to keep yourself safe and everyone around you. And we're, have counselors to be able to help have conversations with you to help you make. Decisions that will have a positive impact on your future. And I will say from my experience that I, those are some of the best kids. It doesn't make them bad kids. Those are some of the coolest kids. They're, they're going in, they're flying under the radar, they're affiliated, they maybe do some terrible, make terrible decisions. Outside of school, but in class, and I mean, it wasn't. So few bits, most of the time students who want to be recognized as that or. So few bits, most of the time students who want to be recognized as that or trying to get it. Who are making the terms in school to get some recognition.
Film relationship, um, that might be our safe place.
We do also have a partnership with the Latino Civic Alliance and they have a program called the Jaguar Program. And, and so uh, the uh, assistant principals from the high school, the middle school, my fellow get together. And if we have some students or families with concern that we um, think might benefit from their services. Um, they can reach out and offer services free. And they have a Quincy office right here across the street. And they have recently hired a case manager just for the Quincy area. Um, and they reach out. It's a, yeah, so there's a case manager that is uh, specific to Quincy now that works with the students. That um, have agreed to have this support. And it's kind of a, a mentor program and trying to help them make better choices. And then in addition to that, they have a parent mentor that works with the family about how can you reinforce. Expectations in your home and what can you watch out for and how you can you support your child that are trying to make different or. Uh, safer decisions. So that's a resource thing.
That like trying to get them out of the gang situation?
Or, or help them not continue to feel com- complete affiliation. So sometimes when students are showing a few of these signs and they're doing a few things and they're talking like they're thinking about it. You can sometimes uh, have an approach with this, this wonderful resource that we have in our community with that program. And um, with the parents and the kid being willing to work with them, sometimes they can make a different choice.
And our first year implementation, we had a really inspiring story, uh, with you know, who entered it and, and graduated in that system in a really positive way.
Yeah, we've had a couple of really nice successes. Not everyone that we reach out to takes them up on that assistance, obviously, but it's nice to have another resource.
We should, do you wanna go over this one? Or do you think we've covered it?
I think we're good on this one. This is, I mean, this is an example of, of the one pager that is updated and put in front of staff and students and go over it. Um, it also informs the, the letter I sent in the summer to try to like. Remind parents before they go back to school shopping, cause that's the other piece is like. Parents aren't aware and then they invest in this like really nice expensive cookie sweatshirt. It's really hard to have that conversation about. That eighty dollars you just spent.
All right, elementaries.
Hey, and just to piggyback on that with the game policy, every one of our schools has one. So, and it's the same for all of elementary. And so uh, we just put one sample on here to show you guys, but we all have. Um, a policy related to um, gangs. So yeah, the elementary, like Alicia said earlier, in twenty eighteen, we redid our dress code to align to secondary at that time. And um, so we made some changes to our policy at that time. And it's, you'll see when we turn the page, it's not under like the P B I S expectations. It's not, hasn't been redone. But the reason why is we really haven't had any issues with it to take the time to go and rework it. Um. And so that's something, you know, that we could possibly consider and talk about to put it with our P B I S expectation. Then put these different things under those categories. Um, elementary is a little different, you know, they have the be ready and responsible. Um, we have uh, make a decision, show respect and solve problems. So if possibly, you know, to align up at those under. Um, the next page, I have all the different expectations. That uh, first part of with the guidelines and responsibilities, it's really. Similar to theirs, it comes from that board policy, um, that, you know, parents have. Um, responsibility and being that they're considered dressed appropriately for school. And then it talks about administrators, you know, have the. Decision on um, the clo- the clothing, whether it's a violation or not. Um. So yeah, we do have that list though. So if you guys wanted to look at that. Um, something similar to the high school where clothing that's suitable for scheduled classroom activities, P E, recess, field trips. We did um, have at the time sleepwear and strapless clothing prohibited, wear appropriate footwear. Um, so yeah, that.
That is one we see sometimes soccer cleats come to school. So I, that's one that we do just be like, oh.
Our cross considering slides.
Uh, no, because unless, oh, if they're.
I'd assume they may or may have not run a mile in its crops.
Say they need to have a back and that is literally just because of safety, safety issues, you know. They play hard at recess and they do play soccer and football and all kinds of stuff. And so what Wendy was saying about the, the cleats. Yeah, I had a kid where his cleats had been shin guards. Yeah, so he came in and he just wanted to, so he could be more competitive at recess and. Yeah, and but he hasn't worn them since. We had a conversation about it. Um, and then wear clothing accessories uh, free from advert- advertising, displaying or suggesting drugs, alcohol, sex, paternity. Discrimination, violence, um, the gang associations, um, clothing being free of that. And then it says explain war, so we have that, a policy in our handbook about that. And then uh, making sure kids aren't wearing clothing that's exposing their undergarments, chest or tummy or private areas. Um, and then just as far as the hats and hoods in the classroom, um, it's up to the teacher's discretion on that. And then hats and um, we weren't at transition times recess and mushroom. So, but um.
And really at elementary, it's um, very, the consequences are very much conversational with the. But, but you know, they said, they get sent down to the office like, oh man, you're wearing cleats. We have extra shoes at our school from P E. So we kind of work with them and we can buy one, borrow from Mr. Medina. Um. There's been, I had one student who wore a shirt that had marijuana reference. He did not know. And you know, we called mom, she was like mortified. Big brother bought it, like, just those types of. I mean, you can tell right away whether the kid has any idea what's happening. And so it's very like innocent usually with, um, and so it's a good conversation, good thing for parents to be aware of. Uh, maybe they missed it too. Um, so yeah, that kind of seems of consequences are very much the same.
Education in dress code?
So, um, all of our schools share out the information about the dress code with our families. And the most universal way that we do that is through our student handbook. You know, which are built to give parents and students an understanding of what all the expectations and procedures are for the school. Um, and in addition to that, Q H S sent out that summer letter um, ahead of time as, as uh, exactly what's saying, just that. That anticipation of people uh, purchasing, going out and buying things. Um, and so that was great. Um, not every school has done that exact thing with the letters. But some of us were talking as we were preparing for this about how that's a, a great strategy. We can see the benefit to that. And it, it, all of us do uh, P B I S expectation trainings. And so many of us. Uh, will bring out the possible dress code during the time as well. But pretty universally, um, we're letting our different families know what the expectations are. And then I think we can go to the next slide. Um. You know, this is, it, I think some of the things we wanted to share in this slide have really kind of come up in this conversation. And it is that when you go to try to wrap, uh, wrap your brain around how to find a good middle ground on this topic. That, that has all of the things that we've heard here tonight and all of the different views. These are some of the considerations that. Are, are eminent in that conversation, right? One, that each individual sense of modesty is different. And so it's really hard to. Uh, you know, as you, you have mentioned John Holly, it's really hard to try to find, and Mr. Martine said, try to find that middle ground. That we can all have some consensus on and agreement on. So that's something we have to consider as we have discussions and, and try to. Continue to align our policy and follow, you know, the district policy, right? Um, cultural and personal expression, um, as you brought up, right? Um, that that's something we definitely have to consider as we're, whatever we end up uh, doing. Um, ensuring that the dress code applies fairly to everybody, regardless of their gender, their socionomic status or their body type. Um, so that's something we wanna keep in mind and that was mentioned here uh, earlier. Um, different views on what's considered appropriate or inclusive does lead to disagreements about what the dress code's purpose is. And how it should be implemented and enforced. So we've heard that around this table tonight too. We just have to be considerate of that. Um, that some field of purpose is, is it safe? Um, does it cause a material substantial disruption? And if not, that we shouldn't be, um, you know. Uh, asserting things about that at all. And others, you know, the whole pendulum of, you know, from, from whole spectrum. Um, uh, from different places. It's just something we have to consider that there's very different views on uh, what would be considered appropriate or not. And then, um, we also know that students sometimes push the boundaries of what's safe and appropriate. And uh, and when they do, it's really challenging to, to figure out what the right consequence would be. That will help fix the problem and not just be punitive, but will fix the problem, fix the concern. Um, and you know, we, we certainly would not, uh, we do not and would not uh, suspend students. For things that don't significantly impact the learning environment or safety. And so if we're gonna have a policy, um, we want to be able, whatever our policy is, we wanna be able to enforce it. So we need to keep in mind that, um, that, that, that's not something we would be doing. As suspending students for what they're wearing unless there's a significant learning environment issue or safety issue. And then the other big consideration is parents. And um, parents' support and enforcing dress code can be a challenge. And, and uh, because parents have all of these different views and feelings that we've listed up about. So we just wanted to, in one slide, kind of talk about, these are all the considerations that we all need to be thinking about, um, whenever we're dealing with. What people choose to wear. And then the last one is just kind of to, just kind of, um, kind of share as we've kind of walked through this journey with you. Of what we had in the past, some of the considerations we had, the discussions we did and where we kind of are now. So that you just kind of know where we're at and how it's based in our current policy. Um. You know, some of the good things about that is that um, our dress codes are pretty aligned at K twelve, which just might our differences. They're four pretty close. Um, uh, we, at this time, feel like having that broad dress code. Have allowed it to be more responsive and the shoes presented themselves. Then they'll totally see the other side of that, but um, in, in my experience. This has been better as an administrator in my ability to address true concerns when they appear. And um, we uh, we, that previous specificity limited us. As we mentioned earlier in this conversation, especially about gang apparel and, and changes in what's coming up that is trying to get popular. Uh, and so having that more specific list, just it would get outdated really quickly. And having this more general part gives us more uh, leeway in, in uh, addressing things as things change and starting those conversations. Uh, and so the, I, you know, that's kind of where we're at. And uh. As we continue this journey, um, at any time, as if we wanna continue this conversation, we wanna make sure that we think about. Um, getting input from all the different stakeholders, you know, staff, parents, students. And just kind of thinking about how, how much of a problem is this? And just kind of getting an idea. How um, how, how many um, incidents are really occurring? Um, I can tell you that, for example, I've had one this school year, just one. Last year, I had two. The whole school year, times where I really had to talk to somebody about dress code, dress, dress violations. Um, but in all honestly, honestly, I spent more time working with this group of people preparing this presentation for you. And this conversation tonight than I have had to spend addressing dress code in the last year of my school.
Do we have alignment? And we found, yes, we're very similar in everything and communication.
Four majors, one minor, and they're, they've all been um, in the gang, gang related. Um, hanging belts and that, well, and one of them was alcohol, an alcohol related T-shirt. So, but.
So we're tracking the data as well.
Yeah.
What about elementary?
I had one soccer cleat.
And then um, a student that wore his, uh, his brother's cookies sweater. So I just asked him about it.
And by all means, we're, we don't share that, oh, we're hardly ever doing this, so it minimizes the concern. It's only just to show that we are collecting data, that we kind of, we have a good track of what we're.
Well, we're using the same data, student behavior management data system, this is the second year of that, every K twelve is using that system as well. So then we can identify some trends.
And what we talked about, so with those situations, because they weren't really disciplinary in nature with them, you know, a misunderstanding. I didn't enter those into our system. So it brought, yeah, it brought up the conversation that if we wanna keep track of those, we could put that in as just a minor. That's not something that we wanted to do. Yeah, or just doc- documenting it.
So again, I was reading up there about the K twelve also have very similar dress codes with other schools. Um, I think they're children, kid by their children. And. My niece, she's wearing, wearing her dress, again, who, who said fingertips. How do you force a conversation with, you know?
We don't, we don't, yeah, we don't because we haven't had anybody bring those incidents up. So we aren't enforcing that. That's why I was saying, we, we tried to align to, you know, the high school at the time in two thousand eighteen. No one is doing that. Like, we're not saying, um, you know, are your shorts long enough? Do you have holes? Like, because they are children. So that's not, you know. I, I, I get what you're saying and where that's, you know, in the policy. Um, but yeah, we're not actually really monitoring that part. Now, we did have, you know, we have had, um, not the last year, but the year before, I think those guys were maybe in sec- seventh grade. But in the, in the fifth grade year where girls were wearing like tube tops. And so, you know, in that instance, we had conversations with them. And that's why, and parents, you know, um, at our meetings, our parent meetings. So you could see like, uh, there was something in the communication piece that when we've had issues, we send that one pager with our dress code. Home to the parents to look at. But yeah, we haven't had anyone say, oh, they're not wearing, they're wearing little straps. Or, you know, like those other things that are lined out in there because they are little.
Uh, I assume that uh, dress code policy is not applicable to extracurricular activities such as sporting events.
Not applicable to what?
Outside of school hours.
Because then, because then we can't, we can't with parents, we can't with like.
Unless it's a safety issue, cause you can't show it's a disruption to educational environment if it's not happening during.
I think my thirteen year olds have void to football games for kids.
Well, I think where we have, where I have some students, the dress code, if we have sometimes that's sporting events that are very public, we'll see gangs show up.
Sure, no, it's not anything.
I, I, some of the other issues, you know, they, they probably have not been addressed.
Right. So for gang issues, you would address this, what does the policy?
Because there are times when we will have rival gangs that will be at the sports event and because they safety issue, and we have had that.
It's the same thing as with like the weapon that fair grass. Right, but it's a, so you will address safety, but you won't address that respect.
I'm not, I'm not saying that we haven't. I, I'm just saying I haven't seen it. I'm just saying that's, that's an example that I can refer to. And generally, most of the students that they do show up, like I was at Friday's game, they were all really just wearing their neon. Some were wearing neon vests, you know, that doesn't mean that there wasn't a few, but I, I didn't notice.
The girls love to put tubes.
If, if I saw a student show up at a football game and they had alcohol or a drug thrown on, I would say something. I wouldn't just let them go in.
Yeah.
Um, I, I guess I don't understand why, why that one, but not the tube top. Not that I mean they were free there, by the way. Because by then they're in school grounds, but it's after hours.
If they showed up with their parent with the tube top on, I'm not gonna say they're with their.
The mom saw it. So I, I guess I don't understand.
And it's not a, you to Quincy, that right there, you just started that, oh, mom's with the kid and they're wearing that.
And, and here, they might be wearing the same thing.
Right, yeah.
I've had this one conversation about this code and the parent walks in wearing something very similar. Um, and it makes the conversation that much more awkward.
Well, and I'm.
Well, and I'm, I think safety definitely has to take precedent over modesty. I mean, if we're getting serious about it, like, safety has to take precedent. And if we feel like there's gang activity happening out of football games, that would be.
Because modesty is a moral issue.
Uh, except tube tops aren't illegal. Marijuana is illegal. So it makes it unsafe environment, where a tube top is not gonna be unsafe environment. So, uh, when I'm looking at this, and I read it, I'm looking at safety damaging school property and stuff. So, I, I may not want my child to come to school on a tube top or a spaghetti strap or, I mean, they're really about shopping. That might not be my choice, but I, I can't project my wishes on other people's kids. So it's, my job is to make sure that they're coming to school and are being safe. So, I'm following the school. I guess the point I was trying to make is, like, usually, from this important detail like this, and I'm sure in the entrance, let's say, to the stadium or even into the school, usually there's some standards that we're expecting people who come into the premises to do. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Know what?
Yeah.
I was looking at code of conduct or, or expectations for, for.
I don't know. I don't, I, I, I have, I don't think we do.
There are other facilities where those things are.
Yeah, we have your standard, ban of no alcohol, vaping or tobacco. We have that. What we really have been trying to do at our games, especially safety, is safety of the officials, safety of the players. You know, we do a long, you know, if we do a basketball game or any of our games lately, you know, we have a message that we say for every game about sportsmanship and fair play.
But what about today's view, some of these girls, when there are gang related people walking around, I mean, they're at, they're gonna be victims too.
Also comes in the intimidation factor. So what happens is, where our SROs are looking for, or the QPD that goes through, is when they are intimidated, they're all standing through, and they're grouped up, and the other kids are like, oh, don't go walking that way, we gotta go around. So that intimidation factor is real, whether it's a Z light shoe or you wanna admit it or not. That reality for our other students is causing an intimidation factor in that safe situation. So we don't go target those kids, they're welcome to be there. But then now the SRO knows, hey, I should, or an administrator, I should get close here, make sure there's nothing going on. Where tube tops, unless they're a tube top gang. Where we're gonna avoid walking around.
I was gonna say, it's just like, uh, I guess I don't have a clear understanding, like, when it comes to school property after hours, like, I would assume people have to respect the rules of that location where you're gonna get kicked out.
Yeah.
I, so.
I would say that's, that's true, Deanna, for sure. I, I have not, I have not seen the level of enforcement at sporting that same I do as I do in school chair. And you know, that just could be to some of we have just been touched to or noticed, you know, truthfully. And that's why the safety, like TJ just said, that safety that rises to immediate, like, we gotta do something about that. But if they're not causing issue, and they're not wearing, they're welcome in all of our spaces. And a lot of we do, we have, you know, kids that are affiliated that do come to things, and they're fine to come to things.
A lot of the management, uh, like a football game is about substances too, right? So when I came here, I was surprised to see that there isn't a clear posting about no reentry. So people were being allowed to leave and then come back. Um, and so it's like, you're doing in your car. So we have disallowed that. The other thing that we've just started to talk about is, like, I was noticing there's a lot of folks bringing in outside beverages. Um, and so it's like, well, what's in that? You know, like, so we're kind of starting to push back on bringing in outside beverages that aren't like clearly closed, you know?
And that's, that's standard practice in most venues.
And it's not our policy, but in our procedure, if you look at page one, right in the middle, it does say, personal connection with the slaughter coach or other person in charge of an extracurricular activity may regulate dress uh, and groom and suit to participate in the activity. And again, but it goes to target two things, the hazard.
Yeah, does that?
If you are, if you are participating where you're in attendance into the activity that, that QSD is putting on, whether it be performing arts or athletics, yes, we can now.
Yeah, and you're still a student under our hair, your decision at a sporting event.
Big picture questions for me, do you guys feel that you're interviewing the students that the policies were understood by them? Or is this sliding scale too big for them to operate under and parents without? Like, you're honestly sorry, you get to be the, the single target, and this is the student representative, but do you feel these are understood by your peers and by you? Just if you're, if we're not providing them with guidelines that they can understand, and that, and that starts the elementary school level, and I appreciate the alignment, and maybe a generational thing that we have to create over time. But it, it is a sliding scale, like cultural changes, and your culture is very different than all of ours, right, as a kid? And, and so then the next question with that, if they're not understood, how can they be fairly applied? Because if they don't understand the, the things, and they don't understand what's fair and not fair, right? And then last but not least, in our charter of student voice, so how much student voice has gone into? As Honley and at PSB, anybody that has to come in and say, like, what do you feel like is appropriate? What do you feel like is? Like, is the belly button exposed to try to think from your safety or ability by an educator, right? Like, I can sit here as a forty-two-year-old man all day and tell you what I think is right, but that's not what's fair to kids. I'm not the one in the building in learning.
Yeah, and I have all these notes from all these different students that I've talked to. And I wanted to do the most important thing that I got out of, I think I talked to healthy, I'm not the entire school, but the same, but a good portion of it. All different languages, all different grades, all different cultures and everything. The main comment thing that was mentioned to me was, a dress code is a constant sexualization of young teenage girls or still children. And I wanted to testify that, children. Dress code is a constant sexualization of young teenage girls or still children. And that can go also be avoided as well. Um, that was the main thing that was brought to my attention this entire, how many, this entire week that I've spent talking to people. Um, again, as you mentioned, wide shoulder, a belly button, a major, so distraction, distracting the old house. Again, how I mentioned to Mr. Dr. Bergman in their day, we were in the car, it was the colored volleyball game that was a mini issue that a lot of students felt uncomfortable with, because a lot of these boys showed up with very short shorts. Showing things that they weren't showing, these crop tops, these tube tops, you could see their buttons into their belly button. And at that moment, no one said anything. And to the, where's the double standard? Where is that? And it's a constant, this dress code is constantly pushed towards girls. And I can tell you, Miss Becca, if you go back and visit, um, Missy, um, showed me that there was zero, there's so far has been zero dress code violation.
Related to modesty, correct. Say that again.
There have been zero dress code violations related to modesty. And I can, I want to experience it with a student that I know, and I got her permission to share the story. Um, she constantly came in, she had her tube top or she'd have long undershirts, she would have shorts under, but it was very, if you would say, revealing. And, um, Missy and I had conversations, and I was like, hey, you know, it was always a conversation between them, very respectful one. I've got a lot of times where the student engaged in conversation because of the nonsense. And one thing she said that at least it got to me, said, since middle school and since elementary, my body has been sexualized. Since I can't wear this, I'm going to continue wearing it, because who are you to tell me what I can wear and how it looks on my body? And what, what's the, how about, how that bothers you? And so, since the dress code became less stricter, she has, she feels more comfortable. She's not wearing the same thing she wore last year. Because there's nothing that the president has to do with that. She feels comfortable, all this clothes, self-expression, freedom of expression for a lot of students, that they feel can't get anywhere else. Um, one, one thing I'd always like to mention is, um, um, some students asked some questions about whether they wanted to change, and one of them was, why do we need to dress professional high school? Um, one thing that was really mentioned that each, for example, super mentor to PD classes, they all have, they all have a different job. And those classes go in to show you how, in different circumstances, in different times, time and place, in the real world, you wanna do certain things. Mr. Wallace, um, Mr. Wood, they all have certain things for their courses that show you, okay, well, you're not gonna show up in your shirt and your shorts to work, right? You're obviously gonna change. So there's certain stuff that are teaching students that they're a different time placement thing. And that's one way of approaching it, and just, you're not gonna wear this, 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 because it bothers me. Um, another thing that was said was, um, one student said, half the reason we can't do school today is a struggle. Half the reason I get up is to wear a cute outfit that makes me feel good. I feel good, I look good, and it's a great day. It's small stuff like that. Um, each student has different comfort levels. Again, coming back to the financial stuff, each different, each student circumstance, we're all different, we all have different things. And when it comes to a dress code, it's very, it targets a lot of students, not only for these girls, but a lot of guys as well. A lot of guys, if you've noticed, where they're, they're wearing shorts, and those may look very inappropriate, but to them, they're athletes. That's what they wear, that's what makes them feel good. I, I understand the extent of like the private parts and covering that, which again, I mentioned was very, that a lot of this is common sense. That a lot of students, especially now I've noticed it, understand that. My boobs are being covered, my private parts are being covered, but I'm wearing this crop top. And so, that's a lot of the feedback that I got from all the students, um, being able, being able to now have such a strict and intense, um, dress code has helped last time, just feel comfortable, I can come in and I'm not gonna be told, I'm not gonna be by teacher, why do you have that? Oh, why do you have this, this, this?
So you would say that based off the feedback that people got, they were mostly appreciative and positive about the situation that that's.
The current dress code.
Current dress code, okay.
And so for them to, I can bring up this conversation, why are we gonna change it? I mean, I haven't seen anyone wearing a bra in school, I haven't worn anything to the guy coming shirtless. I mean, if that was a case mystery that happened in lots of situations, the guy gets to do that, and where's, where's that thing? Consequences that the girls are facing. And so it's a lot of stuff that can, with that, that a lot of students mentioned. I think it's my important to mention, as I mentioned right now, um, and, yeah, uh, again, right now with dress code, I've not seen anyone, um, it's been very, it's kind of common sense, I'm not, I have the bra. You know, and things like that, that students are aware of, understand that. And the constant having to be worried about or being constantly pressed to what you're wearing is kind of that, yeah. Yeah. And again, I believe that I am just one person, and I talk to a good one of people, and I think that if we really wanna have this conversation as far as you have the correct way, we need to involve students. Because in the days, how Chad said, he's a sports show man, and he hasn't been to the school district for how many years? These are, you're having conversations about students that these stuff pertain to them, these things concern them, and these things will affect them. And the way that you do the district, just their teachers, their peers. And it, it's just, we can't have a conversation without the student, or the people that are currently having to deal with it.
That is a wise bit, expectation.
Yeah, and I, and I just cannot tell you how much I appreciate you speaking your truth. How much I appreciate you getting student feedback from your leadership. I think when I was eighteen, there's no way.
I, the ability to go talk to people is really important.
Appreciate you speaking up in front of all these adults in this.
And you can go back and reassure them, I don't think our intention was ever that we're going to change our policy.
Yeah, that was the biggest concern.
This wasn't for the, for me personally anyways, wasn't that we're out to change the policy. It was just more become a familiarization of what is currently, so go back and tell them not to change.
Yeah, that was the biggest concern. And again, I didn't know much, I just took Mr. Murray, talked to the peers, asked a couple of questions, and I kind of went up that and sort of sparked the conversation. Um, and so with that way, we'll just go changing this person. Um, also mentioning that the women's staff, parents, the women's parents, like.
Sometimes your question is less or more, you get more information as.
You brought up a lot of valid points, and again, at the moment, I was like, I'm not sure, I just need to get this feedback, and I will get back to you. And so that's what I wanna do, is give them this chance of like, okay, you know, if they're gonna change, we're just kind of opening a conversation for them to do that, we to have a safe thing.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, just so you know, our intent also to, is just so to provide information to help understand our current reality and what our strengths and challenges, and, and learning, learning together, even our own group here, we got to learn where we sit and how, how well we aligned and, and some of the things that we do.
Looking for the useful words, actually.
I have a question. So related to this policy, I'm hearing that there's been a major of, like, change with the policy.
No, procedures.
Right, but it says twenty nineteen.
So, so this is where, yeah, this word gets weird, so here's the policy, and then the procedure.
And the policy's been two thousand and five, so. Where is this change that we're talking about, if not this two year term?
There is though, there is no change. What it goes to, so this one does need a new school building will establish student dress and grooming standards. So that is the best of procedure language. So each building has their own building, you know, procedure, you know, policy, should use the word policy, it's a building procedure. Um, their dress code procedure, what it is and how they're enforcing it.
This is the district level.
I understand that, what I was saying is it's been referenced a few times, but there is this big overhaul of some kind with students and.
Handbook, the procedure.
You're referencing, referencing twenty nineteen.
Yes, that's the last time that we really dug into it with lots of input.
Not on the district.
At the procedure district level.
At the procedure.
Yeah, I see that.
Yeah, but that's, so in twenty twenty-two, they, that, by the team.
Well, we didn't change anything procedurally, no. It was in-house for the high school, and QMS got their teachers together and collaborated, cooperated. What is accessible, acceptable, what do we wanna put in the handbook, what are consequences that we want?
All within the confines of the two thousand and five board policy that.
Apply board policy.
Yeah, that is correct.
We can't do anything that is in conflict.
The last policy, Deanna, it's really interesting, um, it was, it was updated two thousand and eleven, and really only update involved, um, uniforms. So this policy, like allowing school districts to en- enforce uniforms. Uh, this hasn't changed really since two thousand and five, whereas the policy was, it hasn't updated it.
Um, I, I mean, I really appreciate the work session. This is exactly what we're looking for, where sometimes perception is different than reality in education and information is everything. Um, I was gonna say, I did look, um, based off some feedback I had received earlier, I don't know if it went out to the entire board, but as far as like the dress code policy per building is different per building, and it's not easily findable online. I do know it's in the student handbook, but you do have to dig, find it, to find it. Um, so just a note for accessibility for you to consider at the building level.
Like, maybe just like a, its own link on our books, I, yeah, that's great.
Then you have to find the handbook, and then you have to scroll. We do send the whole handbook.
I probably agree with you.
Oh, any, any other feedback before we read a gavels us out? Thank you.
On the E S D thing, would there be any availability for any of the student board reps to join in that?
Last year there were students that I have.
If you want a policy that's defendable, you need to have a policy that's been defended by peers.
Right.
So, like we said, their culture's changing, what they perceive is, is.
I would be very interested.
We can also break back the, um, artifacts and like summarize. And people just do some kind of sharing about the learnings and kind of experiencing of that, and they don't have to sit through like.
We have too far away.
So would that be something that, you know, we could work with maybe QPD and what you guys learned and bring that back to the board?
Well, I'm just saying, it doesn't have to be at the board level, I don't know if there's another community group interested in hosting it, or if it's a parent night of some kind. Um, so just a thought, it doesn't have to come back here, but now the like chat, it's just more learning.
Yeah, that'd be cool.
Well, they want to especially share.
Like, here's what we're learning.
Yeah, I don't think they know like that specific artist is all about promoting marijuana, and it's just like, we shouldn't be buying that close to your kids, so I think any way to educate.
And it changes so fast.
Yeah.
And, and I'm telling you, it's, it's, maybe I'm whining here, but it's a very complex time to be a parent.
Yeah. The only reason I knew about backwards is because I worked in Nashville, and they have this whole broad thing of you can't have this, this, this.
That's used.
So, I was like, oh, backwards, you can't have. So, I was like, oh, Backwoods, you can't have that, so.
I don't envy you.
So if your theory is Google Vayware, like the, the amount of swires that come up, where you put the baby here sweater, and you can just go get through the like, there's tons of stuff, and that's what, one of the, one of their designs is that a lot of the little pockets that will hide, I think.
Well, thank you, everyone.